He stout is not here. She might be here depending on the timing of our meeting. She has another board meeting tonight that she's at. Dr. Shepherd has certification that this meeting was public notice given in accordance with the provision of section five, five, one dot zero, zero, two to the Texas government code?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right. Ms. Angie, was there any public comment for tonight? Thank you. Okay, we'll go into item A. We first need to open a public hearing for the presentation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Samuel Walker Houston Elementary Turnaround Plan. Mr. Campbell will present on that.
Okay. Good evening, President Holland, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Shepherd and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on our Samuel Walker Houston Elementary Turnaround Plan. Tonight I will share a detailed overview of our turnaround plan, highlighting major components of the plan and its strategic implementation. I believe you have a more detailed copy in front of you as well in your packet. Under Texas School Accountability Law, a campus must develop a campus turnaround plan once it receives a second consecutive unacceptable rating. Samuel Walker received that rating in twenty twenty-five. Once the plan is created during that school year, they are not required to implement the plan unless they receive a third consecutive unacceptable rating. Okay? So those are the things requiring the campus turnaround plan. Here you will see the statute requirements of a campus improvement plan as part of the state required turnaround plan. Samuel Walker Houston Elementary will implement a comprehensive improvement strategy focused on strengthening instruction and student outcomes. This includes enhancing curriculum instructional practices to ensure all students have access to rigorous, high-quality learning. Will provide ongoing job embedded professional development to build staff capacity and support effective teaching in every classroom. The plan you'll see there on number four has clearly defined milestones that guide the implementation. And then finally, the district will allocate the necessary resources, staffing, time and funding to sustain the efforts and drive continuous improvement. As part of the Texas Education Code, section thirty-nine, A, zero, five, three, a comprehensive campus needs assessment was conducted to inform the development of the Samuel Walker Houston Elementary Turnaround Plan. The process included both state required locally developed evaluation and locally developed evaluations to ensure a clear understanding of the campus's current performance and improvement priorities. You can see here that there was two needs assessments that were used to create the plan and provide feedback for the plan and input. And that was the twenty twenty-three Effective Schools Framework Diagnostic and also the twenty-five, twenty-six Local Needs Assessment for the campus. In addition to that, stakeholder engagement was an integral component of this process. Feedback and input were gathered through multiple public meetings designed to ensure transparency and community and collaboration. These included a public meeting held at Samuel Walker Houston Elementary on September twenty-ninth, a second public meeting held last night on October twenty-seventh, and then obviously this formal hearing this evening. Collectively, the needs assessment findings and stakeholder feedback directly informed the strategies and actions outlined in the turnaround plan, ensuring that the plan reflects not only the data but also the voices of our school community. Here you will notice the student achievement goals that are listed in the turnaround plan. The achievement goals are used to guide improvement efforts through the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Here you'll see where the targets include increasing the percentage of students performing at meets and/or above grade level for both math and reading, with a forty percent goal for reading and a thirty-five percent goal in math. In alignment with state accountability measures, the campus aims to achieve fifty component points for domain three in regards to academic achievement and growth status points. Seventy-five component points for English language proficiency students and then also fifty component points for student success status. Within the turnaround plan, you have to choose a specific strategy that you will use to turn around the campus. Before creating the campus improvement plan, the campus reviewed all of its data and input and determined that that strategy would be to intense, to use intensive curriculum and instructional improvements across the campus. The campus will strengthen instruction by implementing a high-quality SBOE or State Board of Education-approved high-quality instructional material. Teachers will receive dedicated time to internalize lessons and analyze student work through weekly professional learning communities that will show continuous improvement and measurable growth with proper implementation. To ensure the successful implementation of the campus turnaround plan, a comprehensive program of required role-specific training and coaching will be provided. It'll be provided to these specific staff members through district leadership, the principal manager, which would be their appraiser, the principal and other campus administrators, and then the others you see there with ICs, teachers and support staff. Although this plan would not be implemented based on the rating that we would get at the end of the year, we are starting these pieces now. So that will begin here in December of twenty twenty-five, and we have it planned out to continue through May of twenty-eight due to the high-quality instructional material. So what you see here is some of those pieces. This spring, the campus will begin with the pre-work training on the research-based instructional strategies and observation feedback cycles that will support the implementation of a high-quality instructional material. Teachers this fall will begin and ICs will begin looking at some of the orientation to those new materials in preparation for the improvement strategy. The good thing about the improvement plan on a TAP plan is it has to be job embedded and continuous. So it's not just a training that they go to. It's actually job embedded coaching, which is what you see here. One of the other requirements for the actual implementation of the strategy includes implementation milestones or checkpoints, if you will. Progress toward the campus improvement goals will be tracked through key milestones, including what you see here. Checkpoints for the research-based instructional strategies, observation feedback cycles, and high-quality instructional material use. And then you also see there the job embedded coaching and then the balances of checking in, evaluating data, and providing updates to not only you but also cabinet members and other district leaders. The district coordinator of school improvement, that would be me. And principal manager will monitor plan implementation through quarterly fidelity checks, monthly leadership reviews and observation data and student performance, as well as weekly check-ins to address trends and immediate needs. At the campus, the campus-level monitoring of the plan will include classroom observations. Classroom observations where principals and instructional coaches will conduct weekly walkthroughs using the Arby's tool or the research-based instructional strategies, as well as principals observing PLTs, PLCs, and the internalization of those lessons. Finally, to the conclusion of the plan is the campus, how we will allocate resources for the implementation. Here you see the campus improvement plan will implement a high-quality instructional material for K through five RLA and math, including Spanish resources, and provide Arby's or research-based instructional strategy professional development, as you see here. The implementation of the strategy will be funded through IMTA funds, Lasso Four and Title Five funds. And if grant funding is not received, the district will reallocate existing resources to maintain implementation and ensure instructional improvements that they continue without interruption. That concludes my review of the twenty-five, twenty-six Samuel Walker Houston Turnaround Plan, and at this time, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have.
This is the public hearing part? Do we ask questions here for the public, but we can ask questions during our board action time? Does it matter?
You can do it either way.
Okay.
While during the next part, there will be a recommendation. So this would be a great time to ask questions.
Board members, any questions, comments?
Mr. President, I have a question. Mr. Campbell? Can you give us some details on how the public meetings went, kind of who was in attendance, what kind of participation?
So the requirements of those is they have to be published, sent out through email and any other formal contact of how we typically communicate with our parents. It has to be posted to the website. It was done on both of those occasions. Mr. Burns and his team did a wonderful job drafting that, both in English and Spanish, and making sure it was out there. Unfortunately, we don't always get a huge turnout. I know he had more in the September meeting. But in addition to that, one of the things that we also did was for all of our campuses is submit a survey that we also shared out with. And we did receive several, quite a bit of feedback with that. And it's in strategically of what is the strengths of the campus, what are some areas that you feel like we need to grow in, and that's not just staff, it's parents and everyone else. And then those are compiled and used in correlation with the data when we're building the plan. The second meeting, which was held last night, didn't have a large turnout, but the same process was followed to receive feedback on the plan itself that's been created.
Okay. Can you give us kind of an estimate about how many parents might have shown up on September twenty-ninth and then how many showed up last night? Just a ballpark.
Twenty-ninth, he said he had three parents. Now there were staff there as well.
Okay.
And then I think he had one last night, one last night.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Campbell, in the progress monitoring section, you mentioned that the DSCI, which is you.
Yes, sir.
And principal manager do these fidelity walks?
Yes.
Who is the principal manager?
Principal manager would be the appraiser of the principals, and right now that would be Mr. Ford.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Langley.
I'm so close to the end, but I can't miss this question.
I'm ready.
And I know this is all new for you. You've done a great job at Mass Park. Now we're looking for a real lesson here. But how many turnaround plans have we done on Samuel Walker Houston?
It's a great question. I don't know the history behind where we were at before. I can remember just when I got here, but I think there was one then, but other than that, I don't think we've had a turnaround plan since then.
Twenty eighteen, which was my first year here. We did a turnaround plan that year. Well, the fall of that year before I actually arrived, so for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen year to go into effect for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But the campus got off the list, right? I'm looking at Amy for confirmation, who she's nodding, makes me feel better. Then we had COVID. Right.
Shut down here.
Right.
Ratings. We were not rated for some years.
Right. So twenty eighteen, nineteen was the last TAP for Samuel Walker.
Now, TAPS are two-year plans. So the difference between a TAP and a TIP is a TAP would be created this year but only implemented next year should the ratings not be where we want them. A TIP plan is what's created during that actual school year. So this plan for Samuel Walker would be a plan for to implement next year. The difference is with us, we're doing the strategic plan that we've created. We're doing some of that work already.
And the other thing that makes the cycle unique is that two years of ratings release were released simultaneously, so you missed the opportunity to do a TIP.
But you're going to fix this circle that we're on?
Yes, we are.
But as you mentioned also the timing, and we'll get to this in a moment in your next presentation later, but the bringing in the the optional education resource, high-quality instructional.
Yes, sir.
That's a great timing to do this and you getting this ready and not having to really wait. We're going to do things actionable now that's going to help the process.
Yes, sir. And what I mean, this presentation obviously wasn't as long as the last one, so bear with me. But some data that I came upon that I didn't get to share with you last time is it's sometimes we talk about our younger teachers, right? That have zero to two years' experience. One of the things that we were able to determine is it's not just our younger teachers. When you look at some of the data from our campuses that have unacceptable ratings right now, two of those campuses have the highest percentage of most experienced teachers in the district. So when you look at that, it's not necessarily the level of experience of the teacher. It may be the tool you're using.
And we're going to fix that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'll let you talk about that in a minute. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any public comment? Okay, we do not have any public comments, so I'll close this public hearing. And then we'll go into section four, items requiring board action. Item A, consider board approval of the SBOE-approved open educational resource, high-quality instruction material, Blue Bonnet Learning for institutional use. Mr. Campbell.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, President Holland, members of the Board, trustees, Dr. Shepherd and guests. Thank you for the opportunity again to provide you with another update on our district's instructional materials. Tonight I will provide you with some determinations from our district committee meeting that was held on October twenty-third. And in addition to those determinations, I will also present you with some action items and decisions made by the committee that we feel will greatly benefit teaching and learning here in HISD. On this particular slide, you're going to see that prior to our district meeting, we had campus meetings with curriculum committee meetings. And again, those committee members consist of parents, teachers, instructional coaches, and administrators. So all of these campus meetings were held together feedback prior to the district meeting in regards to our current use of instructional materials across the district. When the district meeting committee met last Thursday, these were the objectives and outcomes of the meeting. Again, a majority of these members that were on the district committee served as campus committee members. And then there were other district committee members that obviously didn't serve on a campus committee but were part of the district committee. The purpose of the district committee aimed to evaluate and strengthen district instructional practices by identifying trends and key insights from campus committee findings, reviewing district accountability data and staffing realities, and analyzing the usage and effectiveness of current instructional materials. Additionally, the committee explored using streamlined protocols for assessing instructional material use, assessing availability of high-quality instructional materials in relation to district needs, and prepared updates and recommendations for the future in regards to adoptions here in HISD. These were some of the committee determinations. So following and looking at all of that research and all of our data, these were some findings that they arrived at. You'll see here that the committee identified that early-career teachers, zero to two years, feel overwhelmed by the abundance of instructional resources within the district. The data also show that some underperforming campuses have more experienced teachers than others, suggesting experience alone does not drive outcomes, as I recently stated. The committee emphasized the need for a streamlined approach to the instructional materials, aiming for more efficient and effective use of allocation funds, and highlighted the importance of adopting more rigorous and well-aligned, high-quality instructional materials. So those were some of the findings. Next, you'll see here the things that we asked the committee to consider, and that was to consider approving a streamlined protocol for analyzing our current instructional materials. So in other words, looking at all the available materials we have in the district and streamlining those to see which ones are the most effective and efficient for our use and which ones do we need to move away from. That is to address the overwhelming piece that was spoken of greatly throughout all the feedback we received from our staff. The second was to evaluate potential high-quality instructional material options. So there's several options that are State Board of Education-approved. If you remember from our last meeting, the high-quality instructional materials mean that they're a hundred percent aligned to the standards and meet all the qualifications of ALPS and those specially-designed instruction as well. And then also the next action item that we wanted to discuss was the, was to consider HQIM for future adoptions. Again, we currently have all of our adoptions in place and under contract, but we wanted to talk about this new EMRA process with them to do that. So next, the first committee's unanimous decision was to implement that instructional material analysis protocol. So they agreed that we would go with Region Six. They have a process where we look at streamlining those processes. So there's a protocol they follow that they will walk us through. We will develop a committee for that with campus staff, ICs, and administration to look at all those resources, follow that protocol, and determine which ones we would like to keep that are useful and effective and which ones we do not. There are key benefits that when they looked at HQIM, we've kind of talked about these a little bit. The tier-one alignment to the standards and rigor creates availability of the IMTA funds for other projects and supports. Again, I think I shared this last time. The two buckets that are opened up for us in regards to availability of funds to purchase high-quality instructional materials, we cannot spend on anything else but that. Currently, our IMTA funds, we purchase that, but we also purchase instructional technology. We've been allowed to purchase instructional technology for a while and update the things that we need to update. But when we run out of ESSR funds, we have to go back to this bucket. And right now, that's a challenge of keeping that where we need it. So it's another advantage is the funding piece for high-quality instructional materials. It does provide a common tool for all teachers to use in our collaborative atmosphere, provides equity for all students across the district. And then, as I said, the state assessment and the high-quality instructional materials are aligned, and then obviously the job embedded PD. So with that said, the next motion that was made by the committee was the committee in collaboration with our administration team would like to recommend this evening that the board approve for adoption Blue Bonnet Learning HQIM for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. The adoption is proposed for the following areas: K through five reading and language arts, K through five math, secondary math to include grades six through eight, Algebra I, and then also geometry and Algebra II, as well as the K five Spanish Language Arts reading and math. Now you'll notice asterisks on those three things, the last three, and the reason for that is they will go before, well, actually, next month, November, they will go before the State Board of Education for approval. So should those be approved, we are asking for the approval to purchase them for next year as well, and they will be approved. And so that's why those are included there. The other piece to this is there is also another huge pilot that's out there right now that aligns and goes with all these that addresses specially-designed instruction for our special ed and special needs students that aligns with these materials. So that is our recommendation at this time.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Campbell, I know this is going to be for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year to utilize these tools, but when would we actually start, like in the process of getting them in, training?
Yeah.
All those kind of things?
With your approval this evening, we've been confirmed that the materials that could be purchased right now through publication would not be changing over the summer. So whatever we could purchase right now from the advice we've received from Region Six and from other districts that are doing this process is that we are in a really good spot because most of the time instructional materials are purchased in the spring. And when you're asking those things to get shipped in, it's hard to get your summer training and your beginning-of-year training going and get those materials in teachers' hands. By approving it this early, we would be able to get those materials in-house more than likely in the fall semester and start getting that stuff ready so that we can have some spring training, summer training, and beginning-of-year training and get that into our teachers' and ICs' hands.
With that being said, is there any disconnect with the funding availability or is the funding available?
Funding's available.
Thank you. Members? Oh, sorry. I guess that we should have gone through, take a motion to, this was presented. It is actionable to vote on. Do we have a motion from this proposal recommendation from the committee? We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose same sign, pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, consider board approval of design-build services for practice field metal frame covering. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have this in your packet, but we're going to go through a couple of slides here. So the need, just kind of want to talk about the need. So UIL has come out with what's called wet bulb globe temperature, WBGT. And so basically, those are some guidelines they've come out with related to a lot of different factors you can read there, but it's temperature, humidity, wind speed, cloud cover, sun angle, et cetera. And so UIL has put some restrictions on outdoor practices if it meets a certain level, a certain wet bulb, globe temperature. And so basically, with restrictions from the UIL wet bulb, a covered practice field would allow for fewer interruptions in our practice schedule and also not require significant adjustments to our campus start times. And so by providing this, we won't have to significantly adjust things for our district by providing a covered practice facility. So to do this, Texas Government Code allows for six different construction methods. Construction manager at risk, which this board approved for our projects that we are wrapping up right now that we've been working on the last several years. There's also competitive steel proposals, CSP, design-build, construction, manager agent, a hard bid, and job order contracting. And so what we would recommend is design-build, and here's just some factors about design-build. It's a design team with an architect, engineer, and general contractor or under one contract. We request, we send out for a request for qualifications in a two-step process. First, the first step is determining vendors that are qualified, and then the second step is the pricing component. And then a design build does require the district to have an independent third party as a district representative. And so we will also contract that out. And then the design build is for complex projects with tight schedules. And then we're going to propose doing the cost plus fee. So we'll ask for vendors to provide, you know, the fee above the cost of the construction. We will evaluate that. It is a faster delivery method, and then there is a single point of responsibility. And so based on the fact that we need to get moving pretty quick on this to try to be complete by next next summer before practices begin, we need the faster delivery method. And we feel like this is, you know, one of the six methods, and we feel like it meets our needs. So to discuss the RFQ that we sent out, we published it in the newspaper. We sent it out, and actually, I meant to change this, I'm sorry, seven vendors requested RFQ. We received four responses, and they were scored based on their qualifications and are ranked. You do have the tabulation in your packet of the different scores for those vendors. So step two of the RFQ is to seek the costing methodology for each of the top three vendors and then determine the final score. And so the highest scoring vendor will be awarded the contract, and then we will negotiate the terms. And so so the administration does recommend that you do approve the design-build purchasing method and that you do authorize administration to complete the step-two costing scoring and then negotiate with the highest ranking. I'll pause for any questions.
Members, any questions?
Do you have any idea what the ballpark cost of this is?
So the budget that we have put together and advertised in the newspaper was six point five million. But we still really don't know until we start working through this design-build process to determine all the factors that'll be in place. For example, we don't know, you know, what kind of water studies and things will be needed on that practice field, if there's going to be any additional drainage, et cetera, which could escalate the cost. So there's a lot of contingencies built into that budget. And so with the design-build process, we really won't have a better number until we get we get further in the design of the process.
I, I've got a good understanding now of all our sports and all activities, how they work around this scenario. The only one that hadn't been answered in my mind is, we're saying high school, but what we do with our junior high kids?
Well, we, there are times when the middle school has been bust over for different things. Obviously, we've done some improvements at Mass Park, so it's probably becoming less often. But that could be an opportunity to work out a schedule to, to use this facility for different things. To use for multiple sports, multiple programs, not just high school football.
Because the bubble don't go away because you're junior high or high school.
Correct.
Mr. Brown, on, just from a timing of when the wet bulb requirement came into play, can, do you have that information? Do you know kind of how that played out as far as the UIL?
They, they started talking about it a couple of years ago, and then they sort of did a voluntary implementation, which is kind of where we are right now. They have not officially made the announcement, but the speculation is, is that it will become a, a requirement for next fall, which may or may not happen completely, but we know it's coming at some point.
That's a great point. So the first point I want to make about that is, obviously, we went through a, a very master-planned situation with all of our bond projects, and this wasn't a requirement. So I want to be very clear to whoever may be listening, we didn't, we didn't know about this. So we didn't get to factor that in, you know, or we would have, right? So we're having to, but to your point, if it's a requirement next fall and you don't have it, then schedules have to be drastically changed to accommodate practicing during the best weather conditions to where the wet bulb doesn't come into play. So that, if, if we don't do something now, we could get stuck with the, our practice schedules being totally out of whack, so.
That's correct. And, and in our community, that would be particularly problematic because of our, our size, square mileage. So parents, you know, if we had to shift to an all AM practice schedule, for example, which a lot of suburban districts do, but suburban districts are zoned where nobody's more than five miles away from their school, you know, if they're really densely populated. So for them, transportation's not as big of an issue. For us, if we move to, you know, I know our varsity football, for example, meets early in the morning, talking about 50 very committed kids that have been in the program a long time. Freshmen don't do that, you know, JV doesn't do that. They rely on school buses, right? So if they all had to start meeting before school, that would be a pretty big burden on our community, which would, to your point, then would mean looking at shifting our bell schedule drastically to accommodate for that, which would be a pretty big hardship on our working folks in the community.
And a hardship on our staff to.
Yes.
Shift, yeah.
Mr. Brown, in addition to sports, band GGs and cheer also use the practice field as well, correct? And all sports have access to it? Okay, all right, thank you.
One of the kind of off discussions that we had, there are different requirements for different groups of sports and/or extracurricular. With a football team, it's, the requirement is a little bit more stringent because of pads. So there's the, but it's a, yeah, yes, I mean, it could be, I mean, there could be a lot of uses that we could then have just because we have a covered facility like that. So we're solving a problem, but it also gives us some other opportunities that we wouldn't have otherwise having that.
Sure, and soccer's the opposite, you know? The wet bulb doesn't come into play for them because it's freezing and sleeting and windy and everything else. But it'd be nice to get undercover for practice every now and then if you're the soccer team in the middle of winter, so.
Mr. Brown, is there data that, you know, if we have questions from the community that we can provide that shows how much it's going to reduce the, the temperature and the wet bulb index for the students who are practicing in this facility?
We can, we can look for that data. I don't have that data. UIO, though, it's not my expertise, I'm sorry, but, but we can, we can definitely determine that. But from my understanding, Dr. Shepherd, make sure I understand it right, a covered facility pretty much would eliminate any wet bulb issues.
Yes. It's open, it's open air, you know, other than the cover, it's not walled in, it's not conditioned, but there will be airflow because of the fact that it's basically a covered pavilion, right? And shaded. So the shade alone will help you tremendously.
And the, the goal is to have this done by early summer?
By probably late summer.
Late summer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Members?
You don't put pads on until August, really, so you're good.
Mr. President.
Mr. Langley.
All right. I, I have a motion here for this, and I want to make one statement before I make this motion, is if it wasn't affecting every kid in this district that we've tried to build champions every day with because of schedules and adjustment, to me, this should be at the bottom of the pot, okay? And I know where UIL, they gonna run this down our throat, we don't have a choice. But just out of that, I move a motion to approve the design-build purchase method for the construction of the practice field cover and delegate to the administration the RFQ costing methods and to negotiate a contract with the vendors with the high score after step-two of the RFQ.
And we have a motion by Mr. Langley. Have a second by Ms. Switzer, any additional comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Campbell, we do have item C, consider board approval of the 2025-2026 Samuel Walker Houston Elementary Turnaround Program. Board members, we had a pretty extensive discussion before. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Campbell?
Great job. Now I just expect to see future.
Okay, if no further discussion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Switzer, second by Mr. Langley, any additional comments? There are none, raise your right hand if you approve. All those opposed, same sign, it did pass unanimously. We look forward to the, the great work to be done by the team. All right, board members, we do have a couple notices here for our next meetings. We will have a special call board meeting on Thursday, November 13th. That will be to, I think that's going to canvass the vote after the election. And then our regular board meeting is on Thursday, November 20th. Okay? We do not have a closed session tonight.
Correct.
I will entertain a.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Hendrix. Second by Ms. Owens, all those in favor. And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.